Yeah, this is someone here just let's sit down. Really starting to get his research on the basement.
We should, Marty, we should help this.
Take four over here.
Yeah, that was like a little bit.
Yeah, this is someone here just let's sit down. Really starting to get his research on the basement.
We should, Marty, we should help this.
Take four over here.
Yeah, this is someone here just let's sit down. Really starting to get his research on the basement.
We should, Marty, we should help this.
I would gladly jump in if you would.
Take four over here.
Take four over here.
Take four over here.
George, draw me a line.
Take a light.
What did your wife say?
She had to take her child.
Oh, so she was happy. Dollars every day.
How are you?
Hi, Bart. How are you?
I'm pretty good, actually. Lucky back in town.
Okay, folks, we usually stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. Our army. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, one and all. And I get a motion for one of you gentlemen for approving the agenda for today.
I'll move to approve today's agenda.
I'll second.
Oh, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Wolves, aye.
Thank you. The minutes, if you had a chance to look at them.
I read the minutes. I did not see any inconsistencies.
I also read the minutes. I do not see the problems.
I would move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Wolves, aye.
Claims.
I did have the opportunity to look through the claims.
I just one question on the network switch for the sheriff department. Are we getting to the end of that?
So what? Ben just took off the.
Hey.
I know they were doing something on Friday for the backup for our battery and some stuff, so.
Because I didn't, I didn't know the overall cost was going to be.
Yeah, I think there will still be some triggering in the next fiscal year.
But nothing in the eighty thousand dollar range like this, right?
Hopefully not. I think the biggest things have been purchased.
Okay, all right. Well, then I would, I didn't see anything else in the claims. So I would second Ron's motion.
Call for a vote on the claims.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Wolves, aye.
Next one, Mark.
Just need a signature from the chairman for our annual service agreement with EZCOG. If you guys got a copy of the contract, we do this every year. I've seen that. Just allows us to keep operating. If you want to sign two of them, then if you want an original back, I can get it.
You got to get a chance to look at that.
Yep, yep.
Can I get a motion for me to sign this?
I'll make a motion for the chair to sign the agreement with EZCOG.
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Wolves, aye.
Okay, haili, number six, discuss advisory cost plan.
Yep, so that's what we do every year through a company called Cassie. They come in and they look at, it's always a prior year, because they look at last year's. So we know what we charge for the indirect costs for this fiscal year. So like DHS, the mental health, and we're getting that in back and forth. So I have that agreement in your packets and then it'll also show you the full. I think I emailed you. It's pretty lengthy, but it'll break it down wherever you want it for you.
That's every quarter, right?
Yes. So with the mental health, with the region, I think I can still, that's how they put that spending authority to carry over from the approved. I can still get reimbursed for some of that. I just need your formal approval.
I would move to approve the cost advisory plan of the department services as presented from Cassie. Is the company's name?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Wolves, aye.
Okay, Keystone Law contracts.
I think we only have one left. We're waiting on this not offer. It might have been in the back here. I had a paper clip.
Here's copy of it. Okay, this is the other thing that is not on the document yet.
So we just have not offered much?
Right, Tracy, it's that paper clip line.
Yep. It's not the, this one yet. Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the contract in Keystone for sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars?
Are you there, Derek?
I'll get that in here.
All right. We'll have you on here.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna put my thing on mute just so then no one hears everything behind it. If I'm a little delayed coming back yelling, it's because I'm trying to press mute.
Hey, Derek, I also sent you a Zoom link if you wanted to do it that way.
Oh, um.
Sent it yesterday, but.
I'm just, yeah, I have not, I'm not gonna lie, I have not checked my email.
Okay, that's fine.
So I apologize. But I'll just go ahead and put this on mute and then if you guys have questions or whatever, if I'm a little delayed, it's because I'm trying to press on mute and whatnot. So, all right.
Thank you.
So I'd make a motion to accept the city of Keystone Benton County Sheriff's Office contract. It was totaled sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
I would second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Wolves, aye.
Six minutes, we're running through this. Reports.
I have none as I was out of town all week. I've got an early, uh, P cap meeting this month, tomorrow at three thirty.
Have a heartland Zoom coming up. We're not gonna meet Tama this time. Shortage, so.
I had a conservation last night. They've been busy with their parks, their camping, recreation, keeping them busy. And then as for the weed department, they have sprayed so far of last night, three hundred and thirty-two miles in Benton County of road dangers. Sounds like a lot, but when there's twenty-five hundred to do, they gotta waste gold.
How did they come along with their truck?
They're using the old ones. Okay. Any unfinished business?
I talked to you on that story.
Yep.
Did you guys wanna look at it maybe before you volunteer in the carry?
Yes, I do. And then the next thing is Raytown. We discussed that. How do you want that big bill for the maintenance?
I want to do it quarterly. Because we will have our first part of the tax from May, July, December. So do they want it July? Starting July. He should have enough.
I will let them know then.
Yep, I can email her too.
Okay.
Quarterly. And I'll tell her the dates, then I'll.
Okay, because I know that was one of the questions I wanted to make sure that they weren't gonna charges interest or anything for paying a quarterly.
Right.
Sure to be.
I talked with another county too, and that's what they did, so.
I wanted to, I wanna reach out to Myron. I don't know if you guys got the picture of the postal truck in the ditch on Twenty Second. In the area by the dairy, south of Blairstown.
What truck?
U.S. Postal Service. Yeah, Road Sir Rock, did he hit it? Lost control.
We need to report that to our insurance probably then.
I, you know what, I don't know on that one.
It's a carry road, we're supposed to.
Yeah. So we're about to look into that. But that's an area that needs to be dealt with. I know Myron's got it on the plan for twenty twenty-five, but I don't know if we're gonna have to bump that up or if he's gonna have to move something around. We're gonna have to act on that one.
Down by the dairy.
Down by the dairy, yep, just east of the dairy. Yeah, that's a, that's a bad stretch of road. I don't know what he's gonna do with it. I know he's got some plans. But that's a bad spot. We need to bump that up.
Oh, yep, yep. If you guys all wanna like scoot your chairs a little forward, or actually, you guys wanna stand in the back too, because they're gonna be standing with you. Again, so. Yeah.
Here we go. Don't be trading away, but don't get traded away.
Okay.
Don't let your fire on. Yeah, you can stand back there.
Oh, don't forget too, if you guys wanna stop in to the clock.
There's more room over here, guys.
I saw it yesterday.
One o'clock.
Yeah.
I'll go there first and then I'll.
It was probably me that come through yesterday to take pictures and because that's coming back today too.
I'll forward you the email that shows that.
Yeah.
Truck in the ditch.
I need to report that.
Well, it's close enough to nine fifteen, so let's start what everybody's here for to hear. Barb?
I would like that you ask that the comments be limited to three minutes per person, please. Mr. Chairman?
We have.
Yep, we'll do the timer if we have to. All right, you go.
Destructible Link is requesting to change the use of approximately twenty acres of land to allow for a wind turbine blade recycling and storage facility. This site is located approximately two miles northeast of Mount Auburn in section twelve of Cedar Township. And the site is located on three parcels totaling twenty-eight point one seven acres that are owned by Farm Tastic Three LLC, which was organized by Mark Katusch, Wade Hennings, and Dustin Shurm. The area of this proposal, it's not considered high-quality farmland as only forty-five percent of this area has a corn stability rating of seventy-year grader. The area this request has a weighted average corn stability rating of sixty-four. There is an existing driveway used to access this property. Dan McKenna with Secondary Roads has reported that this driveway conforms to county policies. Twenty Second Avenue, a county paved road, has an annual average daily traffic count of three hundred and thirty vehicles. The septic system for the former egg farm was properly abandoned in twenty seventeen. If any existing or new plumbing fixtures are to be utilized, a private sewage disposal system will need to be installed. And there are two private water wells located on this property. This site was formerly used as a chicken egg farm. It is currently being used as a storage facility, but approval was not sought for this new non-agricultural use. This property is surrounded by row crops on all sides with dwellings located immediately to the northeast and southeast of the property. Notices were sent out to adjacent property owners and legal notices were published in the official newspapers of Benton County as required by the ordinance. Our office has been contacted numerous times by parties that are in opposition to the proposal. We've not been contacted by any parties that are in support of or neutral to the proposal beyond the applicants. And our department has also received several inquiries regarding potential environmental hazards and permitting with the environment. So the DNR was contacted and based on conversations with DNR, if the blades will be initially cut up in an outdoor processing area, the area must be covered by an MPDS general permit one to allow the discharge of stormwater from this area. The grinding process is typically covered by an air quality construction permit. And the primary potential risk with these facilities is from airborne particles mainly composed of fiberglass dust, carbon fiber dust, and epoxy resin particles. Other potential issues include microplastic pollution and potential fire hazards. One of the major goals the people of Benton County hoped to achieve with our land use plan was to protect agricultural land of the county. Other goals of our land use plan include providing for the orderly growth of urban, industrial, and agricultural lands so that they develop in harmony with each other and encourage the development of commercial industrial businesses in defined areas of the county. The area of this proposal is located within the general rural use area of the rural service area as defined by our land use plan. The majority of urban activities are discouraged from being located in the rural service area. This is essential to preserve the underlying economy of Benton County, which is agriculture. The general rural use area is intended to be contained as open space and agricultural land with the exception of farm residences, appropriate rural residences, and other low-impact development. This proposal is not included as one of those intended uses within this area. Within the unincorporated area of Benton County, most industrial uses usually occur where the use is site-specific or not appropriate for populated areas such as a quarry or the storage of fertilizers or natural gas. The economic system does not ensure compatibility of land uses and puts priority on short-term results. Land use decisions based solely on the economic system can easily lead to incompatible uses. And one of the policies for this service area is to promote and protect agriculture as the primary use of land in rural Benton County. Another policy is to separate or sufficiently buffer agricultural lands and operations from other land uses to the maximum extent possible. This proposal will allow for an industrial use within a largely agricultural area with little to no buffer. According to the compatibility of land uses table within our comprehensive land use plan, heavy industrial is considered incompatible with agricultural and residential rural uses. The problem with incompatible uses is that they adversely affect a third party, be it an individual or society as a whole. These adverse effects may be in the form of pollution, noise, smells, or other nuisances. These adverse effects often lead to an economic hardship to the third party, most often as a decline in property value. According to the agricultural land preservation ordinance, non-agricultural uses may only be permitted if the following are found to be true. The use is not inconsistent with purposes set forth in section three fifty-two point one of Code of Iowa nineteen ninety-three. The use does not interfere seriously with farm operations within the area. And the use does not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. The proposed use is consistent with the specific policies of the Benton County land preservation use for the existing or requested land uses. So those are the four criteria which need to be found to be true in order to permit a new non-agricultural use. In this proposal, it's not consistent with preservation of agricultural land and orderly development. There are serious concerns about this proposal's effect on nearby farm operations and its potential to materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. As I reported, this proposal is not consistent with the specific policies of the land use plan for this service area. As these conditions for approval have not been met, it is recommended this proposal be denied for this reason.
Okay, can we hear from the company Destructible now? Is he on, Haley?
Can you still hear us, Cody?
Yep, absolutely, I'm here. Did you want me just, I don't know if you guys have a presentation presented and I know Jared's there in the room, so just didn't know how you guys wanna kind of proceed here. So I'm Jared. So I'm a project manager for Destructible. I drove out here yesterday to be able to kind of inspect this property about a month and a half ago as far as looking at checking out for the opportunity and seeing and then us putting in for permitting or checking SWIP and everything as far as our stormwater prevention plan and inputting for the science why we're here today, right? So we have a presentation about what we're about, what we do, and then we're open to any and all questions.
Okay.
Absolutely, so I'll take it from here. Appreciate Jared. I think you pay it to everyone for their time, understand the concerns and hopefully that I can answer some of those questions and ease some of those concerns with the, with what we're gonna kind of overview here. So in short, Destructible is a company who's focused on end-of-life solutions for renewable energy. End-of-life solutions, specifically around wind turbine blades. So we have spent the last two years, or three years actually, refining our capability to handle wind turbine blades responsibly. As you guys know, or many people know, wind turbine blades are something that's kind of been a pain in the side in regards to waste, waste management, right? Filling up landfills, those kind of things. We've been able to come up with processes to remove them from site, transport them, shred them, store them, and ultimately get them recycled. We're partnered with a company out of Cedar Rapids called Regent Fiber. They're owned by Alliant Energy. They are a forty million dollar recycling company and that's where the material that we're gonna be storing or could be storing at this facility will be going. But we've been working with Regent now for two years. We've shredded several, several thousand tons of blades for them and it really are our solution for the material and for handling the material. You know, as it says here, we're dedicated to a circular economy and really trying to solve that waste stream issue in doing so in a responsible manner. Can I give an overview of our experience for everyone in the room? You know, to date, we've done twenty-nine projects. We've completed one large repower project and for those that don't know what a repower is, it's a complete upgrade to a facility, you know, thousands and thousands of tons of blades. We completed that project just last week where we did almost very similar operation that we're proposing to do here where we shred the blades, store it, and then take it from that storage facility to the, to the final recycler. All the other projects are one-off blades. As it says there, we've done ninety-three hundred tons of blades, blade material. We also do metal. You know, we've done five thousand tons of metal material to date and this is kind of our footprint in regards to the amount of projects and where we've done them across the United States. So just, you know, kind of giving a little bit assurance to the people in the room, we're very experienced in what we do and have a lot of tenure in handling this material and doing so responsibly. Little bit of project overview, obviously this is the facility we wanna use, you know, it's short-term storage. We have a signed contract with Regent for this material, so Regent Fiber will take this material. This material is not going to be stored at this facility long-term. You know, it will be stored inside, all the shredding material, all the shredding and everything operations will be done indoors. It will not be done outdoors and, you know, we'll probably only be here for, that material will probably only be there for a length of probably six months in, at this facility. This facility is ideal for us because it does have the capacity, the large indoor storage to where we can keep that material indoor minimizing dust, minimizing any kind of impact to the area around it. You know, again, going through that, why, why this property, I talked a little bit, you know, being remote, I know there is some, some farmhouses near this, but this is obviously a remote area which is ideal for us. Again, to minimize, you know, any, any impact to the, to anybody who would be immediate around us, even though our dust mitigation is almost to the point where there's zero dust. on site, it has the indoor storage, it has the ability for us to have a small lay-down area to process the blade before it goes into the shredder. All those things are really, really ideal. And again, can't talk to the, the, the amount of indoor storage that really allows us to keep this material indoors and keep it out from, from the wind and rain and elements. You know, we talked about it a little bit already, but, you know, keeping everything inside is, is what we're really wanting to do, and that's where this, this facility really speaks well to us, keeping the, you know, shredder inside, keeping the material inside, keeping the dust inside, mitigating it in every way that we can. There's plenty of airflow through these barns, which is nice, keeps any moisture buildup, keeps any, you know, any issues we have with the material, the quality of the material, because Regent has pretty strict, strict quality standards in regards to their material, so. Environmental responsibility, I know that's an issue, and then, and, you know, this is not the first time we've stood up a temporary facility or operated a facility in a rural area, and this question comes up quite a bit. You know, obviously our environmental deal is a hundred percent landfill diversion, we don't want these blades going to a landfill, that's why we partnered with Regent, that's why we come up with our solution to be able to get this material properly handled. But the other side, Jared mentioned, you know, our environmental permits, working with, obviously in this case, the state of Iowa to, to ensure that we have our air permits as needed, our SWIP permits, make sure we meet all the environmental regulations, and then going above and beyond that, right? We do not want, you know, we, we use water, we use some vacuum systems and those things to ensure there's no fiberglass dust that end up in the air. You know, we don't, we don't want anybody getting that fiberglass dust anywhere outside of, of that contained area, and we, we take a lot of diligence to do that. You know, we use water on all of our shredders and all of our saws, and we also use misters in the front of our, front of our building to ensure that when the shredder's running, any excess dust that may be created won't exit, exit that, that open area to ensure, again, that air quality, we're meeting all air quality permitting and, and not letting it at, the dust that is created leave our contained area. We also ensure that all the ground that we process the blades on are, are back, are cleaned up, and ensuring that that fiberglass material doesn't end up in the dust and then, you know, a windstorm or whatever comes and blows that away, we make sure we let everything down and gather that up on a, on a weekly basis to minimize any dust that may be able to get into the air. We spend a lot of time, a lot of effort to ensure that on the environmental side. On the SWIP side, you know, we're ensuring that, I think we have, Jared has plans, he can talk to that a little bit, in regards to making sure that we have fences and stuff in place to mitigate any material that I think there's a, getting into any water source or, or getting out of the area that we're supposed to have if there is a rain event. So, you know, those things will be in place as well, and we'll ensure to, you know, do periodic audits on those to, to make sure that everything's taken care of. You know, one thing, obviously, community around this is really important, we usually go and meet the people that are, that are near a facility in which we're operating and give them, you know, our contact information to make sure that they have, you know, a source to call if there is, if they have any questions or complaints or anything that happens there, because we, we really do value doing, you know, doing our work, obviously it's a responsible work in, in solving this problem, but also taking care of the community in which we operate in. You know, we don't operate outside, we have strict operating hours, which I'll talk to a little bit, you know, we don't shred outdoors, we maintain the property, keep it clean, our guys are very well versed in keeping everything orderly and clean and making sure that it doesn't look, doesn't look messy. And, you know, obviously engaging with the company that's, or the, the community that's around us. Compliance and permitting, we already talked about that a little bit in regards to making sure that we have the permits in place and make sure that the, obviously we're meeting with you guys today in regards to zoning, but, you know, when we talked about, I think somebody mentioned the fire safety and fire hazards, you know, that's, it's mitigated, the material we're actually processing is fire retardant, it's treated that way as it, you know, for the wind turbines. And we also make sure that it's not ever introduced to anything or around anything that could cause a fire. We've stored a lot of this material in similar barns and handled it and such to mitigate that in every way that we can. We obviously will have fire extinguishers and, and those things to meet any fire codes that's in place as well. Noise in air, there is some noise, but because it's indoors, it's minimal, we will be running equipment, we do, we're going to be doing noise studies to ensure our decibel level is low. We'll operate from during normal working hours, I think from seven, seven to six or seven to five to mitigate any noise that happens after hours to ensure we're not impacting anywhere around us in that regards, so. And with that, again, appreciate everyone's time, I guess I'll pause here, I know we went through quite a bit there and see if anybody has any questions that he and Jared can answer, and hopefully be able to kind of ease any, any concerns in regards to our operation and kind of what our, our end goal is.
Gentlemen?
Open for questions, wait. These, these blades are quite long, I realize the buildings are, what, 550 foot? It would take a special permit to truck each one in, so are they cut into pieces before they would arrive?
Yes, sir. So when the blades come in, how many trucks we're looking at, we have two trucks, we're looking at possibly four trucks in the morning, four trucks in the afternoon, but they come in just on a regular step deck or a flatbed. So they'll come in already cut where they're stacked up on there and then well offloaded from that point, our processes. We have excavators with rock saws on them, so 40-inch blades, we panel those down to smaller pieces where we're able to feed our shredder, and then our shredder will feed in the building as we move that shred back in. So it's just regular load-sized trucks, under 40,000.
Can you tell me about your shredder? I've seen one, it was a track machine and it was diesel-powered.
Yes, sir. So that's, that is what ours is, ours is a track machine, runs a CAT, so yeah, runs a diesel motor in it, runs a C-18. It's pretty large to get through these, so the issue with blades themselves, like, they are so strong, their structure and what goes through them, so when it comes to shredding, we use a large shredder to get through, we, we've used smaller shredders, but it's just it, they are too strong in their resilience to go through. So we actually have a very large shredder that uses the duty cycle on our shredder to get through and break it down. Our shred becomes like a 10-inch minus material, then we run in, but it is a large shredder. Yes, sir.
So which building would the shredding take place in?
So it would actually be to where they showed the open storage area going through, that doorway, we will build onto that and build a large area that we are able to load that shredder with an excavator. So right, right here off the south end, on the left side, on the right side you have, there's going to be a water well and kind of like that office where it shows those two load outdoors, so we won't be able to build out and shred there because that comes around the corner, but the large on the far left, so right there where the arrows at, that will be the door that we will, we'll actually build a structure right there that'll cover over the shredder and the excavators. We bring the panels in that are trimmed down, we'll bring those up, feed the shredder, and then we'll have stairs, rough buckets inside, taking from the shredder and running it, because the interior of that building has a 10-foot ceiling, so I can't run any large loaders or anything, but we'll actually run from there and just, you just get stairs and be moving that product towards the back of the building as we stop the shredder. And then on the south end, closer to us, like, this will kind of be the blade lay-down area, as the trucks come in, they'll make the loop. Off to the right in this picture is where the scale is, we're looking at having the scale either repaired or bringing in a mobile scale, we're looking at using any type of CAT scales nearby between the two projects coming through for efficiency. So as we do, the trucks come in, that upper area on the south, which is going to be the top of that picture is where our lay-down will be, so we will actually start, we'll be bringing blades in, and then as that, we'll have a team working on paneling, not far from where the shredder will be, and then from there, those panels will go into the shredder and then be shredded directly into the building. We'll build a structure over the top of the shredder unit there, so that would have, and our shredders all have sprayers as well.
So there would be initial trimming, cutting of the blades outside?
Yes, sir. And on those rock saws that we have with 40 blades, those actually have water tanks on the back of the excavator that we feed water constantly onto that blade, so kind of like cutting tile or cutting anything else, it's just like that, you add water right directly to the blade and holds all that dust in it. So there's no direct dust right off of the blade.
So on water usage, how many gallons are you talking a day? I am by no means an expert, what would it do to the water tank in the area?
No problem. So we have on the back of our excavators, like an IBC tank, like a 275 to 300 gallon tank that we hang off of the back of our excavators, and we typically go through one to two of those a day per saw. We'll probably have just the one saw on site, and then we'll usually do a direct feed, a lot of the C-18s, but our shredder's just a direct feed with just sprayers on it, it's kind of like running misters, it's not even a heavy spray, it's not trying to saturate and create a bunch of weight and overwater this, we're just trying to keep that dust and make that fill, like the plane over the top to be able to hold that down.
And you mentioned, for trucks morning?
I have a question about the water quick.
Go ahead.
So it's previously a chicken building, could still be a chicken building right now because it is known to be that, so as a commercial chicken building, I've pulled all that, I'm guessing no more water usage than what that money had a chicken for doing?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I bet you we'd be under 500 ounces, I mean, definitely under 500 ounces, between just having the sprayers going, now adding sprayers over to the top of where we're sitting with the excavator's hard speed and the shredder to create a barrier, like a wall barrier in a mister, but even misters running, I mean, like we say, it's just like, it's not heavy spray, it's not fire hoses, it's all just about missing the whole and creating barrier.
I have another question about the water. So how are you, what are you doing to mitigate the, the pollution that's going into the water? Where's that water going?
Everything's coming back.
And how, how are you making it so it's clean water that's going out on the land?
Yes, so we have, within this SWIP program, we'll be putting up silk fences, there's, there's a creek right next to that building that we look, so we'll actually be running a silk fence as far as any heavy, if anything dries and then tries to pick up, but we're actually going to run, trying to think of the name, like the straw, what do you run with this SWIP program, all the way down that fence, like, make sure that it goes, we'll check that as it, so, on any SWIP program, to check to see if it's acting as a barrier or make sure if anything's catching, and then we keep anything from going over there is our main goal.
One, one thing to note too, if you guys can hear me, you know, fiberglass material is inert, is, is non-hazardous, is not recognized as a hazardous material, so even though we will be doing all the things we're saying, but I just want to make sure everyone knows that this, this material is, is considered inert and, and non-hazardous, it, it really is just a dust, it is an irritant, if you get it on your skin, it will make you itch, but as a, as a hazard or a carcinogen, you know, per environmental, it's, it's, it's deemed non-hazardous, so.
So you have no way of reclaiming that water and continuing to use it?
We haven't. It's not that there's no way, we can look as far as building any type of containment, be able to go through and run a pump system, I mean, that's definitely something, you know, adventurous looking to, but typically we've had where we just bring, we haven't, we run sweeps as far as getting product filled up, but like Cody says, to where that product is inert, when that, of course, when they build a blade, it's in policy that after it's dried, it's in a hard solid state, and it comes down to where it comes to like a powder, there's really, it's no different than, than grinding on some sheet rock or something and back to what it, you know, creates, so.
The overflow, you say you're going to get four trucks at a time per blade? How many of those are planned on put there, and what are you going to do with the overflow of the cut-up blades?
So that south end is where they will sit, we will come off with the trucks there and we'll be working there, like, we'll be going right away, those trucks will stop, they will come, it'll start in July, and we will probably be done by September for the loads coming in, so we would be receiving, even though it's eight trucks a day, it would actually be six blades per day on the project that we'll be working at, and then we will keep processing through, and then even when those trucks stop, we won't stop until we process through those and it's all shredded. Our goal would be to have that shredded and done. Weather isn't, like, the cold weather, the snow, the water, like, having heavy moisture levels in or on the shred doesn't work, hence us even wanting to cover that on the blades when we clean them off, but as we shred and go through, it doesn't do us, like we speak to Regent Fiber, and the product we deliver to them for their recycling process can't be, that's our biggest reason for being here, it can't be stored outside. We, between the equipment running through the recycling line, it can't be wet and heavy dense or it just sticks tall. And so that's, that's our main goal with looking for the storage and helping do that, so.
To Jared's point, you know, there's six blades coming in, they'll have somewhere around 60 tons of material coming in, we should be processing through the shredder about 60 tons a day, so as the blades come in, they'll be shredded and stored indoors, there's not a plan or, or it's not the intent to have blade material start stacking up while our shredder is trying to shred. The shredder we're bringing in is very large, and so ideally we'll panel those blades and shred them and put them right back inside, so there, there shouldn't be that much blade material stored outdoors at any given point during this project.
So six trucks come in, how many trucks go out?
Do you know how much waste is going to go to our landfill?
None of this will be going to the landfill.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, none of this, as a matter of fact, the one part that we've worked through that is our hardest in separation is the root of these blades, and that's where the duds are, where it attaches to our hub, and those are actually going to be taken off before they even come here, so those will actually be working their way over to a recycler that we work with in Chicago where they will go through those and get all the material separation from the fiberglass, so we won't have any of that waste coming over here, not metal, not stuff sitting on the sides, we'll literally just be paneling, going through the blades and then shredding them in. How many blades are totally in the process? We have between the two projects, right around 400.
So if you guys are familiar with the site, the majority of the current rainwater flows into the lagoon on the north side of that property, so I think that's kind of an added benefit that fits their usage, that having it been a large commercial laying operation, they have that containment lagoon there to direct any rainfall into that to protect the environment.
So when it hits that level, we're overflowing, or at a tube, or I think they go under the Cedar River then?
If he's using 500 gallons a day, that will never...
Just the water off the building to go into the lagoon. The stuff on the south side will flow down to the creek.
Right.
They're in a hole, they have to build a retention base and to hold it there, try to.
Try to.
I have a question. So for 20 years now, we've been sold the wind turbines, wind turbines, green air energy, for the better for the environment. We all know, they're, they're, they use oil every day. 20 years later now, we're trying to figure out how to get rid of them because they're, they're not sustainable with the lifespan of it. We start this, how many blades are we going to cut a day? So my question is, now you're starting this, from his statistics I looked at, there's one project completed, so is it going to take 20 years for our grandkids to realize the environmental impact that this is going to have on it? Are they going to find out then that the dust and the water, everything that they're mentioning? You know, that's where we're at. We're getting sold another bill of goods, they're trying to tell us that this is environmental friendly, well, so were the blades to start with. Go back to the companies that make them, have them make them into something that they can get rid of, or make them last.
What's the plan if, you say none of this dust, none of this fiberglass is going to escape, what's the plan if it does? Because it will.
Shut down operation and...
No, no, to recover it, to recover it from the river. How do you recover fiberglass dust out of the river? Just out of curiosity.
Is that the river, is that like the creek next to it?
Or the creek.
Of course we do.
The creek goes into the river.
The river's like a half mile away.
They'll figure that out 20 years from now when we're gone.
Right.
Our grandchildren will know it.
I have a question. 20% of the fiberglass is unrecyclable, what happens with that 20%? 20% is unrecyclable because the thermostatic process is used to put these in wind blades and that. So what do you do with that? Go ahead, Cody.
We don't use thermal, Eric, or thermal process at all. Regent Fiber uses a fully mechanical, so 100% of the wind turbine blade is recycled. And, and to give you guys some background on the Regent Fiber, they use a mechanical process to break it down into a fiber rebar, and Jared's actually very well versed in this process, but that fiber rebar is put into concrete and asphalt, so they don't separate the resin, they don't, they don't do any of that, they use 100% of the... they use a mechanical process to break it down into a fiber rebar. And Jared is actually very well versed in this process. But, um, that fiber rebar is put into concrete and asphalt. So they don't separate the resin, they don't, um, they don't do any of that. They use a hundred percent of the blade, um, and, and separate it into different, uh, components, right? You have your balsas and you have your fiberglass and you have your, um, um, phones and those kind of things. Uh, and they separate all those out and they use them in concrete, uh, applications, right? And they, like I said, the facility in, in Cedar Rapids, uh, i- is extremely impressive. It's a forty million dollar facility. Um, and, you know, they don't waste any of the material. And that material goes to Cedar Rapids. A hundred percent of the material that's gonna be in these barns will go to Cedar Rapids, uh, or will go to, uh, Fairfax is actually where it's at. Uh, to Regen Fiber to be a hundred percent recycled. So, um, you know, we, there, there will be no waste material, uh, produced from the fiberglass that will be processed, uh, at, at this facility.
So going back to your presentation, you had one completed project. How long has that project been completed for?
So that's of, of this year. Um, yeah, I'll go back to that real quick. So we, uh, we started that project in January. We finished it, uh, last bit of material went to the recycler, um, um, last week. And, uh, that, that project was, uh, you know, somewhere around fifteen hundred tons of, of material that we were processing through.
So have you had any OSHA citations or EPA citations in that small amount of time?
None, no.
Did you expect it in the next ten years?
So we're, we're looking at something you're doing and then the outcome, you only have one thing to base it on, it's less than twelve months from my understanding.
Ma'am, I think you're misunderstanding. It's twenty-nine completed projects they've done and the one is a repower project that was completed.
What's the definition of repower?
Twenty-nine, yeah.
What's the dish, definition?
And the other thing is, this is, this is this year. Last year we did, uh, seventy-eight projects and we did two, uh, two repowers, two very large projects. We processed over, and I apologize, I was just showing you kind of what we did this year. But last year we processed over thirteen thousand tons of materials. So, um, and, and no, we, we haven't had any, um, EPA citations or no OSHA citations.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Obviously, you'll have to wait till it turns red up there.
You've got facilities all over. Look up above the door there.
It'll flip out.
It'll be a little light till it come on and it'll be red.
It's up on the top.
Everybody in that corner, drop your finger still.
There you go.
There you go, pull down, there you go. So a question, you have facilities all over the United States, right? You have facilities in other locations?
We processed, uh, Amarillo, New Mexico.
Okay, so why this site? Why not expand those?
So what we're looking for here is, um, the two repowers, one of the repowers, so it's two projects, uh, that we have. One is in northern North Dakota on border winds, right on the border of Canada. And the second one is in Austin, Minnesota. And the biggest thing for us is we could take these blades and take them all the way back to Amarillo or wherever, but the cost and trucking doing that and then bring the product after we shred it all the way back to Fairfax is just so costly. So for us, it's looking for somewhere, this processing side of it, this is just one of the steps within taking care of this. And it's exactly what we're speaking about between cutting, shredding and then off take going right to Regen, that's our contract with Regen Fiber. So for us, it's closer instead of trying to take everything from here to here, truck it all the way back. There's just a lot of logistics that wouldn't make sense. So we're looking for a facility. Uh, the main goal is the dry storage for us.
So when you load out, how does that happen?
When we load up the shreds themselves?
Yes, when you, when you load it up to take it to the conveyor, that's gonna be outside.
So we'll have conveyors and end up trucks. So the trucks will come around the loop and we'll actually run a conveyor with a hopper, uh, just outside the building there. And we'll have fully contained from the hopper dropping. And we'll actually just have the end dumps pull up and we'll feed into the hopper, uh, from the shred with skid steers. And then I'll load the trucks and as it loads, the back end of the trucks will up.
Will there be dust from that?
Yes.
Yeah, we can run misters, yeah. No, my elders, so we can contain.
This whole thing, we run the chance, there's no way God can, if you can control one hundred percent of airborne particles for that. You can't do, don't set there lie. You can't do a hundred percent. You cannot do a hundred percent of the runoff into the creek, onto the river, onto farm ground. There's no way you can control a hundred percent of them. The people that are gonna suffer for that are the people in Benton County. This is the farming community. There is no way you can do what you say you can do. God can, Jesus is the only one who can walk on water. If you don't believe you can, uh-uh. It's our, you're in our home right now. So you have to prove yourself and I don't think you can.
Put it by your house.
Yes, put it by your house.
If I have the buildings there, I would.
That's, that's pretty brave talk when you're not there. This is our community.
Well, discussion only.
Hey, 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 calm down, please. Keep it, keep it civil.
You farm with chemists?
So do.
Okay. Yeah, you use Roundup?
Now you're playing this bullshit game.
Well, you're playing on him because you don't have.
I said my part.
Many proof.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna. I've got a comment here. I've got a comment.
You're talking to the wall.
Okay.
Roundup is.
I've got a comment. Talking to my hand. Nobody in this area has reaped the benefits of the rent from these wind turbines. Other people have. Let, it means they've got all the money out of this. Let them deal with it.
Right.
We, we've got enough ISOs in this bedroom. We don't need any more.
We don't need another Rose Bar tire.
Don't care. You're gonna have wind generator blades out, you're gonna have trucks running up down the road. We've got enough problems maintaining our roads the way it is without extra traffic on that road. That's, that's an unmolested area over there. It doesn't need to be molested.
Can we formally open this up?
I'll be, I'll be everybody. That'll be all right, Ron.
Mr. Chairman?
I have some information too. Um, I googled if they have done any other places in Iowa. And it says specifically they have stored blades at Newton, Iowa, Ellsworth, Iowa, and Atlantic, Iowa.
Newton.
And the state environment regulations in Iowa has stated that this storage is illegal and should be investigated by the attorney general's office. The company has also failed to provide a two million bond to cover the cost of the disposal if they abandon the sites.
That's not you though, right?
That's not us, no.
It's.
No, it's not us.
That's the actual manufacturers and people of the wind turbines.
That was being fed on Facebook.
No, I didn't get it off Facebook.
Well, yeah, somebody did a bad AI search. That's not their company.
It says it's destructible.
We researched them fully before we entered into any agreement with them on leasing up facility. And everything we found was positive.
Let's, can, can we take, uh, and I look through the room here and I, I see we have many, uh, adjoining property owners very close into the, in the area. Could we hear from them first?
Thank you. Appreciate it. My name's Josh Peterson. I'm here to speak today on behalf of my family farm, Peterson Farm. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer. I've worked in the industry for twenty years in the, uh, uh, energy industry, specifically working with solar, battery and wind turbines. Um, I can hand this to you guys, I'll swing past these supervisors. But through some information if you want to pass around, thank you. Um, I've worked on decommissioning plans as well as development of projects throughout my career. Um, I'm here to represent, like I said, my family farm. I'm an owner on the multi-generational farm that's directly adjacent to this property. Uh, we've worked to maintain this land over generations for many, many years. What we're proposing next door is that they're in the risk. Um, so I support renewable energy. I make, I, I make a career on renewable energy and work in this business. But what we're proposing and talking about today here is not renewable energy, it's waste site.
Yes.
Uh, I got five, four points I'm gonna bring up really quick again. So, um, and then I have a few decent information that you guys can take a look at. But, uh, first point here is this is not a reclamation site. This is a dump. Yeah, because claiming the site's in these reclamation, they're gonna use the interior of the buildings. Uh, the truth is, have you ever already seen this type of issue play out in different places in Iowa that she mentioned? Four other spots in Iowa.
I got pictures.
Exactly. This happened, Newton, Atlantic, Ellsworth, Fort Dodge, Maringo, most recently, Maringo. If you take a look at what I've handed you, there's photos recently of Maringo with equipment just stacked in the site, parked there, nobody's touching it. They actually have a letter from the state DNR talking about the Maringo site, how it doesn't comply with solid waste ordinance requirements. So the state has specific requirements about solid waste versus recycling. And if you're not in compliance with, um, the recycling requirements there, then you're basically considered a solid waste site, which is a dump. Um, so if you take a look at the photos, there's a mountain of waste that's just parked out there. The site's under formal investigation with the state. Proposed site has all these red flags, no detailed plan, no verified recycling partnerships and no long-term accountability. These guys are cycling partner is, they presented that, right? That's a ten million dollar facility in Fairfax that does just this work. They grind up blades and they recycle. In fact, the state of Iowa spent the money. So contractors would deliver those blades to that site to do all this work. They're proposing on a site here in the middle of Iowa, right? Uh, the second point is financial picture doesn't add up. I've worked on decommissioning plans, just like this one here. These are like certified engineering documents, right? They hire professional engineers to put together a document. How do you construct a facility as a thirty-year life? How are you gonna deconstruct that facility and remove it from the site properly and disposable, right? That's all written here. It's assured by a licensed professional. If you go to the back of this one here, it has fiberglass turbines or fiberglass blades in it. If you go take a look, they recommend directly to send these blades to the Fairfax site, a site that's built to do exactly what we're proposing here today. That's a site that spent ten million dollars for all the facilities to do exactly what we're gonna do here today. That's not what they're proposing. They haven't heard a single assurance from them financially that they're putting a ten million dollar site in place to take care of these wind turbine blades. So what are we doing here? Well, if you look at the cost associated with disposal of fiberglass blades in a decommissioning plan for this one here, it's sixty-two, uh, wind turbines, three blades apiece, talking around ten, ten thousand dollars per blade to pay that disposal cost. I think these guys were talking about four blades themselves. So if you do the math, they're probably talking around three point two million dollars in fee by delivering those blades to the proper facility in Fairfax, Iowa, right? So why would somebody want to do it this way? Right? It's a lot easier just to, maybe propose a site here in the middle of Benton County, Iowa, chop them up, dispose them and drop them and walk away. Funny enough, uh, their company actually was founded, started beginning of twenty twenty-five. Uh, it was their CEO. He started beginning of January. So the one product to talk about in January, actually going in this year. Um, what's concerning about that is a newly formed Texas-based LLC coming up here doing this kind of project. It seems like a corporate setup that raises serious flags about shielding live building, right? You have a large contractor that's doing this work, that's actually taking down the rebuilds from these turbine projects. And then they're coming back and they're trying to find places to dump these things to save the cost of disposing them. It's not sustainable. It's not a well-fed business. It's a shell game. It's a corporate shell.
Barbara said three minutes.
The environmental risks.
I'll give you my three. Take it.
The environmental concerns are really quite concerning. They got a creek that's directly adjacent to Cedar River. One of the rivers that the DNR is really, really concerned about from a disposal standpoint. What I heard today was issues with water. There is absolutely no way they're gonna be able to separate any kind of fiberglass material from the water. This isn't handled through a common PDS turbine permit with, uh, silk fence and just common erosion controls we do. This is actually an industrial waste application. So you can't take that water, use it for, blend it up with whatever they're working on with this fiberglass and then put it back in the water. It's, it's, they can't do that. That's not proper disposal. Um, the, the last point I'll make, I haven't seen anything today, I probably don't have a plan or anything, right? I saw a fancy presentation of water work. I haven't seen anything about their proper disposal plan, like how they're gonna actually facilitate all this. I haven't seen a plan around any of this. Uh, I haven't seen a contract with the recycler. Why would they be working with Regen? When Regen already does what they do, right? Why wouldn't they just have them dispose there, right? Uh, there's no bond. I think that's one really critical thing here today that's, um, a problem to think about. Maybe it's the most simplistic scale. These guys are hauling in and out tons of blades in this site. Can you imagine what your county road is gonna look like?
Sure.
At the end of the day, just simply that. Let's not even talk about what that site could look like if they decide to haul the shell in, leave a bunch of blades there and walk away from it. Like, they're gonna, they're gonna pound that, that, that concrete and that asphalt or concrete on the county road. You guys are gonna have to do something like that. I would want some kind of financial surety. I want some kind of bond from these guys to make sure that they were doing what they're doing. On top of, I at least want them to bond the project. So if they decided to, they did to four other sites in this exact state recently, that you at least have as financial assurances that they're gonna clean up the mess with a bond afterwards. Um, so I would say at a minimum, you should be looking for plans and assurances behind all of this before you even ever approve something of this nature, including bonding at a minimum. The actual county roads themselves for the damage that we're gonna provide. Um, but today I haven't seen anything that's really looking at it that proves that this is legitimate business. It's actually legitimately trying to handle and address this issue. To me, it smells of exactly, you've seen proof of it in four other sites in this exact state. It's a large-scale contractor starting a small shell corporation, finding little sites in Iowa, tuck these away, pull it up and walk away by themselves. Thank you.
Travis?
We're on next door. Yeah. Well, Cody wants to. But I will tell you right now, we are not a shell company. Uh, Cody, who is speaking, is our CEO. Um, we left a venture last year that was very successful to start this in twenty twenty-five. Two, what you guys are speaking about in Iowa, we do not have any other spots, issues, sites, anything that we've dealt with. But like, that's not us. And two, uh, Regen Fiber does not process, they accept shred. When it comes to shredding and paneling and processing, that is not anything they do in their facility, in our contract limits and they accept shred.
I'm sorry, I work with the line energy. I know about Regen, our facility, and they absolutely, everything you guys are proposing here, bond yourself.
No.
So, hey, Jared, we don't, we don't have any arguments in regards to, to Regen and, and our relationship with them. We, we've been working with Regen for two years and processing shred. To answer your question, the contract, if you're sharing my screen still, you can see the contract signed by Regen Fiber in regards to this material, uh, in regards to XL Energy's, uh, acceptance of said contract. And the bond, uh, in, in regards to your, your comment about bond, our project is fully bonded. I can provide that to the county if they needed to. We, we have a bond in place saying that we're gonna do what we're gonna do. Um, and, and I really do appreciate what you just went through. Like, we are, we have, uh, this is not the first time we've been in a conversation like this in regards to our, uh, other companies out there who have really just poorly handled, uh, handled the, uh, material and left it in, in lay down yards. In fact, we cleaned up probably five of those lay down yards, uh, to handle it responsibly. The whole mission behind our company is exactly what you're talking about is the issue. Is the, uh, you know, people not handling the problem, doing it properly, not bonding their projects, not being financially, uh, assured and being able to do what they say they're gonna do and not having good, uh, relationships or solid relationships with recyclers. We absolutely do have that relationship and we have stood side by side with Regen, uh, over the last couple of years to make sure this material is handled. And we have the contracts in place to ensure that we can do it and we have the bonds in place. So again, I, I definitely appreciate, um, you know, your, uh, your, your background in regards to what has happened in the past. We are not that company. We're actually building this company on the basis of going and, and ensuring that that material does get properly handled. It, um, you know, that black eye within the industry on fiberglass blades, um, we, we have the solution for it. So, uh, I just wanted to let you know that we do have a contract in place. We do have a bond in place. Um, and we are shredding the material to send to Regen Fiber and Regen does require us to shred it. Um, they, they cannot accept non-shredded material. They do grind it, they do, do everything from the shredded material. Um, but they do not own shredders. Um, we're actually gonna be operating at their East Buke site, um, to, to shred blades that they've already received, uh, because they have to have it shredded. So, um, yes, so I'll pause there.
Kevin, you're next door.
Uh, I guess I would think in six months, they said it's gonna take six months. So this, the site's already set up and ready to go. So we're gonna have to go through this again in another year.
Okay. How can I speak? My name's Alyssa Lee. My parents have lived down the road in April for almost fifty years. Um, it's a beautiful area. My biggest concern is, um, sorry, I wrote something down. The shards of fiberglass that can carry miles, there's preventative measures. There's a beautiful breeding pair of bald eagles on the river. There's already one in Cedar Rapids, like they mentioned. Why do we need another one? Just a big company looking for low rent to dump places. And this is a really, why do we risk marring our beautiful countryside and farmland to enable poor return forms of energy is a very foolish idea.
I just have two comments. One, I would ask the company to respectfully update their website. Because it's stated on the website, it started in January of twenty-five. So when you go to look at the information, you can't find a lot of information. So it makes you question whether or not they are legit or not. So I would request that for sure. And then I would request the knowledge of, you know, when will the transaction occur? And then I would request the knowledge of, you know, when will the transaction occur?
I'm responsible for it and I'm going to clean it up because I have an investment in it.
Absolutely. And you know what probably would give everybody in this room a lot more comfort? Is when this first started, that everybody be honest and upfront. Maybe have a public meeting. We have a community center in Maunirby. Call everybody, show them the plan, show them how this is going to work. I'd want to get everybody on my side. I would not want to try to kind of, it feels like that it was snaked around the corner and to try to get it done behind people's back, get it through the board of supervisors before anything is, anyone knows any different. That's what it feels like to me. Now, these other people, I don't know if that's what it feels like to them, but that's what it feels like to me.
So as the owner, I'll tell you how it feels like to me. When I bought this property with the other two owners in March of 2023, it was based upon a conversation with Mark Greenlink, who was at the time, well and alive. And I asked him, I said, Mark, I said, I'm looking at this property. This is currently an ag property. And I said, to my knowledge of our county ordinances, any property severing CSR involved is to stay as ag usage. This is well below that. I said, can we, you know, purchase this and convert it to another usage? And he said, this is a prime property to do that. He says the buildings are already in existence. He said it's well below 70 CSR. He said it fits the criteria to be redeveloped. So I submitted a land use application change and Barbara sent it out to more than just people within 500 feet that she's required to. She published it in the paper.
I remember. We have a. To publish in the paper?
We have a sign up on the property that has an email address and a phone number. I contacted several neighbors, had a discussion with them and told them if you talk to anybody that has any questions or anything that wants to be addressed, feel free to give out my name and phone number.
Mark, I have 125,000 bushels of soybeans on site. Do you think maybe stop, talk to me?
I called your father and he never called me back.
Is dad's name on that?
We live exactly across from it, like literally can look down. The next, we've never seen you. I don't even know who you are.
Mark, you didn't contact me.
We both were on their mowing before.
Not on my property.
Well, not on your property, no, on our property.
Well, one thing I have is a cornfield. The one thing I.
One at a time.
There is a cornfield next to my house.
No, I meant we were on our property.
But her point was that you did not go to speak with this man or us. Speak to her and they're right there.
I think I take time to reach out to everyone, but I.
Then don't just sit here and say you did.
He didn't say he attacked.
He said he walked around and talked to all the neighbors. And there's a whole bunch of neighbors that are standing here that haven't been talked to.
We said, our phone number is published on a site.
We didn't know this was even going on until we got a paper in the mail. That's right. Not a word of it. We got a piece of paper in the mail to come up here. Had no idea any of this was going on.
All right, here's a resident right next door.
This is in Marengo as well. Tarrytown was owned a great facility right next to it. He's had full grain adventure rejectors, fiberglass filings in the, 125,000 bushels of soybeans that go to seed and different feed. How are you going to protect my soybeans? How are you going to protect me?
Well, I mean, not you, Mark, not you.
Yeah, no, we, we just came for great containment, right? As we go through and we build a structure.
I'm 50 feet from where you're going to grind it. Nobody's talked to me, not one person.
Just a lot of back and forth about, I think, really passionate.
Just questions.
No, it's just questions about people that really care because they live next to it. We haven't been felt like they've been part of a communication. It's a great process, but I would still bring it right back to the facts, right? You got a company that's literally started in 2025 coming in here, talking about something that has a history tracker for the problems in the state. They're saying, oh, we're not like that, right? But they showed you a fancy presentation. They've got a contract with this company. And what else do they have to show you right now? Nothing. I don't know about you, but a lot of your experience and time, you wouldn't hire me if I was one year in college. You'd hire me with 20 years' experience, Doc, you're right. The same thing goes with anybody else. You're probably not going to hire a company that's been literally founded for less than six months to do something for you. You're going to hire somebody well more established here. So why would Benton County, why would Benton County take a little gamble on this opportunity with really no tracker or history? And in fact, you have more history on action or ad behavior than you have on good behavior.
Yeah, sorry about that. All right. Thank you.
One more issue I would like to bring up respectfully, Mark. That if this was up and up and you wanted to switch into a commercial, which I don't think it is commercial, I think that we can all agree in here. This probably should be an industrial site, not a commercial site, which would be a different code. And I don't know if it would fit it or not. But are you not a part of the zoning committee?
Yes.
So Mark just said at the very beginning, which I think my interest was when you made that a storage facility, it didn't get a land use change to commercial. It should have been a commercial land use change. Okay? So one, I guess I'm upset in the fact that you should know that. So you either are choosing to ignore that to save tax benefits or you're not competent to be in that position. Okay? So respectfully, you ask why we shouldn't believe you. That's another reason why I wouldn't believe you.
So we've been storing some boats and campers in there over the winter to help finance creating the property up with the end goal of selling it and it going into another usage.
Understand that.
Not knowing what the end real usage was going to be, that was, why change it when it may not even be changed?
Because it's the law.
She has a sign up site, ain't it? Advertises for storage?
Yeah. It's the law. And I believe your taxes went down in the last year by $4,000. Now, I'm not sure what taxes are for business.
They went down based upon the fact that it had been being assessed as a working egg laying facility. And at the time we purchased it.
Let me know if you got a holdup because I'd like my taxes to go down too, because mine are a little high. But, but do you understand why there's question and why there's a distrust?
Yeah, and I appreciate our conversation.
And this is not personal. This is just, these are red flags that come up to me because you know what? I'm old and I'm retired now and I'm out there every day, 24 hours a day. And this affects, this affects more than just our house and our shop. It affects a farmstead that's been around for 140 years, okay? And it could take three months for you to ruin 600 acres. And when they leave and they're gone and not holding the bag and you're holding the bag, honestly, I'm not going to probably be able to go after them because they're an LLC. And you guys are an LLC. So who am I left to sue? The supervisors.
So I have a question. It wasn't a commercial egg laying operation. And as a neighbor, what's your preference? I mean, we've heard about, you know, increased truck traffic. You know, obviously when it was a commercial egg laying operation, all of the feed came in on trucks. All the eggs left on trucks, all the litter left on trucks.
At least it was feeding people.
You know, I mean, we have, with a, with a commercial laying operation, we have noise, dust, smell. I mean, we've looked at options in this property. And honestly, we think that destructible is really about the best.
Yeah. Your house to get out from under a bad business decision.
Absolutely.
I get that. I get that.
Would you rather have turkey and chicken?
Yes.
It feeds people.
Would you like the old truck?
It's an ag business.
The thing about it is, the thing about it is it's under agriculture. If it's cows, pigs, sheep, chickens, ducks, whatever you want it to be.
If it's agriculture, you can pretty much do whatever you want.
This, you're asking for commercial. It's actually industrial, okay? So you're asking for a land use change. And Mark, I will tell you, when the sign went out and it was storage and you guys were making it storage, I don't know that anyone in this room had one complaint about what you were doing.
That's right.
You were a businessman trying to make it, okay? You didn't affect us, okay? Yes, there might've been more traffic with people coming in with things. And now maybe you were a legitimate, legitimate business that wasn't zoned properly. But no one said anything, okay? Now, this seems just very underhanded.
Gentlemen, I would, I would say this is about their acquisition of this property. It sure looks better now, but it isn't.
I agree. I agree.
Mark, it looks sharp.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, what the tan hat?
I've got a question. Is this facility going to be ready to grind before there's a blade delivered?
We won't grind until we're ready, like as we have everything going.
You're going to grind before the first blade, when the first blade comes, you're going to grind it?
No, not until we're prepped and ready and.
Right, yeah.
The blades land everywhere.
It'll be a dump ground.
Well, the blades will start July. We're probably within a month, yeah. We'd have something bailed over the top.
Why wouldn't you have this done before the blades come?
That, that's our goal. That is our goal, but we are coming up on towards the project starts.
Who's being charged to start the project?
The big greenberrys, the energy companies that are running, like that's who contacted us before.
So you didn't have enough work to get this going?
Yeah, we're going to work as hard as we can. By July 7th, the first blades come to have be ready to shred. We're just kind of beating up against the timeline here. We're less than a month out and we've got a lot of, a lot of paperwork and those things to do to get this thing fully leased, as well as get the infrastructure built and get our shredder mobilized there. There's just a lot that has to happen. And so I think that's what Derek's talking to. We're going to work as hard as we can to make sure those blades are sitting.
You don't have time to stop before the blades.
Because it's going to be a grind.
Exactly.
We're trying to.
Have they come rolling in and you're not ready? I'll tell you in a stack.
Oh, you're coming in days. We won't grind till we're ready. That's where the corn.
I, I would like to say something. So I'm not representing them, but I am a general foreman at Archer Daniels Midland Cedar Rapids, where the world's largest corn grinding complex. I am very familiar with dust mitigation and what it takes. And you ain't got what it takes up there. The, I was late to the meeting, which I apologize. And I walked in and he's talking about ventilation and air movement. So this stuff doesn't accumulate condensation or water. How, how do you have any dust mitigation when you have all this air movement? That's impossible. You cannot do it.
Well, it's less a waste treatment facility.
Yeah.
A water treatment facility.
Christine is very familiar with it also. She's retired from ag. I mean, this is a bunch of crap. You cannot do it. What?
Have you seen the buildings out there?
Yes, I've seen them. I am a neighbor up there.
Single one of them, by the way, from chicken facility. They want to assert the construction, it's July 7th, but they don't have any of those buildings. They prep the first building.
Your ceilings are 10 foot tall, so you can't do any work indoors.
Get a grade right away. Get it ready. Get it up there in the ice.
When will this? They'll just start. They'll start. As those come in. And then we'll split.
This will turn into another Rose Bar tire.
All right, let's, let's bring this back.
I mean, you can all fault me on that.
Barb, we've got something.
End of the day, what's, what's the benefit for Benton County community citizens?
There is no benefit. We do not get any of the benefit of any of these wind towers being put up. So we're going to be left with dealing with the wind blades.
Here's your thought. Here's your thought.
Barb's got something to say.
Well, Barb and then our attorney Derek.
Derek, can you?
So go ahead, Barb.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I want to let everyone know in here what the Board of Supervisors is charged with doing. We are looking at our land use ordinance and our comprehensive plan. This use needs to be, it is not consistent or inconsistent with the purpose of set forth in this ordinance. The use does not interfere seriously with farm operations within the area. The use does not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. The proposed use is consistent with the specific policies of the Benton County Land Preservation and Use Plan for the existing and requested land uses.
I have a question. Whose words are those?
Those are right out of our ordinance.
So.
That's what they're charged to do and it's in our ordinance.
That is correct. And we've even gone to the Supreme Court and it's been proved unconstitutional.
Who's gone to the Supreme Court?
Benton County, yes.
State of Iowa.
We have, we have had people.
All due respect, that's unbelievable.
Yep.
That's unbelievable.
Our land use ordinance.
You wrote this land use, you didn't hear this, this, this stuff right here.
Yep.
Did they specifically talk about functions like grinding up woodmill blades?
No, but what we're talking about is the land use thing. That's what we're talking about with the overall land use pattern of Benton County. So that's what we're talking about.
Inside this land use ordinance, are you saying the supervisor have no discretion on the kind of businesses that show up and want to do business in this county?
They are to look with compatible issues. That speaks to that in our ordinance and comprehensive plan.
And you're saying issues is compatible with hay production, livestock production, people's home where you're. I mean, I'm, I'm getting lost in these words.
That's, that's what the compatibility issues are speaking to. The overall land use pattern in this area is ag.
I, I see where, I, I see what you're saying, Link. When she read it, we have to determine if it is consistent or inconsistent.
As sure as hell is.
Barbara, I have a question. In 1998, they tore off the rail line from Benton to Dyser and they delivered 40,000 railroad ties onto my neighbor's property beside our home on Farm and made it a, what most people here would call a railroad tie dump. And when I called into your office, you looked up the county ordinances and said, well, we don't have an ordinance against railroad ties in the county, so it's his property. He can do what he wants to with it. So because you suffered then, we should all suffer now. Let me finish the story. So I was not happy about there being 40,000 railroad ties next to our home on Farm. And they were there for probably 15 years. And the person that owned the property passed away. His son had the opportunity to get rid of them through a coal fire, coal-fired. Through the plant in Cassville, now in Cassville, Wisconsin. They loaded them up and they shipped them out. And when they left, I was somewhat upset that they left because I had become accustomed to them being there, just as all of you being. That makes no sense. You were accustomed to there being a land facility there. Yeah, since that land facility has been on from 2016 until present, you've become accustomed to it.
The degree more.
You know?
It's keep on track of paying, to keep on track of the hearing with their anymore.
Yeah.
They have to be there anymore.
No, it's human nature to be resistant to a dump being put in next door. But it's not a dump. It's a business. It, it will look like a dump. This is not a dedicated process and facility that was built at, for that purpose, like they were in Fairfax. This will turn into what is in Marengo on Highway 6. So I talked to the farmer that owns and farms land around the facility in Marengo and. I've driven by it. He has, he has no issues with it. I asked him, I said, Charlie. Unless you're typical Iowa County resident. He also. I bet he does.
Yes, he does. I talked to the car. He has a business.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to get this back on track.
We need to get back on track.
Yeah.
Here, here is a, I have a, can you tell us your name?
My name's Michael Kane. I own the next property up to the north, 5083 22nd Avenue. And there's a lot of, of good information going around here. I, I'm, I'm with everybody here and saying that I'm not particularly fond of this idea. But are there any long-term environmental studies on projects like what you're proposing to put in here that you have information on that you can share with us?
Any long-term, like what comes out of it?
Right, like 20 years down the road afterwards, what is done to the environment in the area?
Not that I know of. I don't think Cody's talking, he can say something.
Yeah, so, but we can provide you the, there's no long-term, because it's been long-term in, in the solution to the, uh, regen fiber started this back in, uh, I think, 2021 in regards to their recycling facility and the shredding, uh, for their facility, uh, all of the suits shortly after. Uh, so we don't have any, any long-term studies in regards to our direct operations. What I do have, uh, we did a study with, we got a study from Boon's Corning in regards to this fiberglass. Boon's Corning is the one who actually builds, uh, or they used to manufacture 90% of the carbon-based materials that goes into wood turbine blades. Uh, and they have the environmental studies showing, uh, you know, the resin, the silica, the, uh, fiberglass, uh, after it's bound in, or on it, excuse me, um, uh, what, you know, it's, it's impacted and it's inert, and it, you know, all the way from respiratory, our biggest deal in that study was, uh, the respiratory effects of it on our employees, which, uh, we found that, uh, is, uh, you know, what, what PP we have to have, and it also shows the environmental impact, and that it really is inert and noncarcinogenic. So, I can provide that, uh, I can email that over to, to whoever I need to, um, that study from Boon's Corning. But a direct, uh, environmental impact, a 20-year study, it hasn't been around long enough to, to, uh, you know, our solution hasn't been around long enough to do that, so.
All right. Got, uh, property owner back here. Two of them.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm with, um, US Bank. I represent the Dot Peterson Trust.
You never talked to any of the?
What's that?
You never talked to any family members?
Talking to the farmer, and the farm manager. I talked to Diane.
Okay. So, all I'm just gonna add, a lot of, a lot of very good points brought up. Um, so since we're, we look at, after the fiduciary role, I'd like to see an appraisal from Benton County, maybe a, another third party to see what current values are, and then if something like this would go through, what values would look like. Um, one other point I would bring up that I've seen firsthand, and then another one secondhand, when I see temporary, I get very cautious, because the temporaries that we, the one we've dealt with and the one we dealt with secondhand, um, that temporary turns into years, and it turns into problems. That's all I heard.
I think you brought a good point on, um, property values, because if you look up Benton County Iowa farmland values, our land is selling for an average of $150 a CSR point, where in Iowa County, where they allow windmill blade recycling and windmills, their land sells for $210 a CSR point. That's a $60 a CSR point positive. I can't equate that to the fact that there's windmills there, windmill blade recycling, but I definitely don't see anything that's hurting their property values compared to ours.
I would say that if you would go and look at the Benton County CSR mass, you would see that the, the difference of the farm ground and what it would produce is probably a little bit different in Benton County than it is in Iowa County.
Iowa County's land CSR is lower than what ours is, but theirs is selling for a higher value than what ours is.
I would, I would not say that we would have anything to attribute in, in Benton County letting windmills that raise that.
Well, what I'm saying is that there's no evidence that is depressed property value. There is evidence for the sites to stay with their banned blades. And that's why destructible and regen fiber are in business today, because we know in every industry, there's bad actors.
And unfortunately, for destructible ink, what, if they are on the up and up, they have to fight these bad actors. And so, when it's people's livelihood in the community, then we have to fight against what we think potentially could be. And why would we think that destructible ink would be any different than the five other bad actors in the state of Iowa? Question for the supervisors, please. Uh, I have heard that, um, the county does not allow wind turbines in the county. Is that correct? If we don't allow wind turbines in our county, why would we even consider having a, a?
Yeah.
Well, there you go. Reclamation, I'll say it that way. I was gonna say a dump, but.
Call it what it is.
Reclamation site, if that is truly what it was. Agreed.
Uh, okay. As a property owner up there, I, my name's Cody, I should introduce myself earlier, but uh, he's saying on fiberglass, you know, there's, it's not a carcinogen. For years, nobody thought, uh, asbestos was a carcinogen either. The property owners, the people that live up there, and the people that suffer from this. So, I mean, that, that includes us, guys that all live up there. Kevin, well, I don't live there, but I'd like to build a house.
I want to get him through it.
So.
Okay, so, I'm an old guy. I'm Dan Van See House. Um, and I think what you're looking at, I have applaud you for trying to get something into those facilities. We brainstormed for years what we could do with that same site. However, I think your, your short-term money is over, is fancy compared to what the real risk is, and this is a short-term risk. If it was a three or five or 10, 20-year project that this company is trying to do for the community and for their, their company, they're, they want to be in, in and out in six months, and then they're gonna let whatever's there, and I know, once you, as you grind anything, you're gonna have a waste. There's gonna be contaminants there, um, and so I think it's a short-term situation, so, and I, I think the risk is too high.
But I think you're planning on being there more than six months, right?
Right, so we're actually, we would like to purchase the property, is what we want. So, we would like to.
So, question, why wouldn't you purchase the property now? I mean, I would hate to invest in something that I don't.
We are, we are out of, we are out of Texas, but as far as going through, there'll be future projects. You guys do have, maybe not in Benton County, there is a lot of wind around over here in eastern Ohio State, so one of our goals.
The fact that Alliant Energy made the investment in the Regen Fiber Plant is what is attracting people like destructible to the area, because Regen Fiber is the end process. You know, destructible and Jared and Cody are just a link in the chain.
Right.
You know, they, they get it in, they do their process. So, people like them with businesses that they have are gonna be attracted to this area of eastern Iowa, because Regen Fiber made this investment in this plant in Fairfax. I'm sure your contract with them is airtight, because the reality is, is they could leave after your lease term is up, the DNR has to come after somebody for a violation of solid waste, and it won't be them, because their company folded up as an LLC out of Texas, and you'll be stuck in this bag, and the DNR's gonna hit you with a multilevel violation if it's actually what these other four sites have made.
He'll be used to looking at that, like the railroad ties, though.
He will.
Lady in blue.
Yeah, just to talk to her real quick, what he said there in regards to us folding up and this material being loved. We do have a solid contract with, with Regen Fiber to take the material. This is be the fourth project we've done for Regen Fiber, um, so, you know, still solid, uh, solid relationship there, as well understanding that they're not gonna, they have no need or want to fold up. Uh, Regen's not gonna go anywhere. They're backed by Alliant. They have a solid business case in regards to their end product, um, and, and, you know, financially, they're very secure. So, you know, I'm, I'm obviously, uh, taking a huge risk here as well in regards to processing this and storing it for them, and then getting it over to them, um, because I have, you know, no want or need to get a litigation or have material on my hands that I can't do anything with. We don't, we're not a recycler. Uh, we don't recycle material. We partner with Regen Fiber. The reason we're looking at this facility, as stated, is because Regen has put such an investment in their facility. There's a lot of wind turbines around this area, uh, and it's a good, uh, logistical, logistically a good location for us to process the blades and get it over to Regen. Um, you know, we're, we're obviously leasing this, uh, at first, um, really to make sure that the economics, um, of, uh, future projects coming into there, uh, so that we can purchase it. And, and our idea is to purchase it and make this a, you know, a processing center for, uh, for this type of material for Regen Fiber if, if it, uh, if the economics work out. So, just to provide a little, a background in regards to, uh, you know, our intent in the, um, uh, security we have in regards to Regen taking this material, this material not sitting on a site or us being left with a site that's, uh, similar to, you know, Newton and some other places that you guys have, have mentioned throughout the call. Uh, that is, that is definitely not our intent, is definitely not something we're, we're wanting to do, and that's why we partnered with a, a company as good as, as Regen.
Hey, Cody, real quick, why would you invest in a parcel to set up as a facility for long-term and only have it under a lease? What's the benefit to you to lease the parcel, but then put it a, a capital investment to something like that, not have guaranteed that you're gonna get a return on that capital investment at the end of the day? That just seems kinda odd to me, when you're buying a property, unless it felt like it was kind of a shell game you're playing with corporations. It's a lease with a purchase option.
Yeah. Correct.
So, what about, so they're gonna invest in this?
And, and they answered that question very directly.
Yeah, because all you have to do is exercise.
The reason we do that is because you'd wanna fire a bullet before you find a candle, right? And, and I'll, I'll use that terminology, and I hope that, that lands well, but, um, we're gonna do this project, we want to do this project, this short-term project, um, and we're gonna use this facility to do it, and we want to ensure that everything works, right? You don't know what you don't know.
That's right.
We're using still sale, we think it'll work for this project. If the economics work out well, we'll purchase, and that's why we're entered into a lease-to-purchase option, because we feel like it is ideally located, um, and it will make sense, uh, but, you, you know, uh, we've, we've gotta mitigate where we can and, and make sure that, uh, it'll work for us on the long-term. It will work for us on the short-term project, we know that, um, but we're evaluating, will it work on us, uh, work for us on a long-term project.
Okay, Cody, I've kinda done my background on this, so I have been down to Regen, and I see what it looks like, and I know what a property looks like when it's done right. And it appears that Regen is doing it right. But you gotta remember, it is done by Alliant Energy, that is a huge company that is worth billions of dollars.
Correct.
They also have their own wind systems that they are gonna worry about in '28. They currently do not have any that need to be, um.
Decommissioned.
Thank you. Decommissioned.
Correct.
Right now. So, what they did is they built this $10 million facility, and they are taking in some of these messes from the state of Iowa. Out in western Iowa, it started in 2018, the, the attorney general started suing, um, for, uh, dumping illegal dumping out there, and they have picked up this stuff to clean it up, and it's been seven years later, they're still trying to clean up the site. So, they were very proactive, knowing that in 2028, that these wind turbines were, they were gonna need to do something with them at that point in time. Well, we better look at our decommission plan, and we better make sure that we have something set up so that we're not scrambling, trying to figure it out. And like Josh said earlier, all of these, uh, facilities have to have decommission plans, and it has to say right where they're going. The one he has says it's going to Regen.
All included.
I haven't found one yet that says it's going to destructible, because there's very limited information on destructible, sites, websites.
No, I appreciate that. And you would never say it's going to destructible, it'll always say it goes to Regen or a recycling facility. As I stated before, we're not a recycler. We are a processor of the blades, and to, to get it to a recycler, we have to get it to a shredded material, and that's the solution that we provide.
Okay, that's a great point. So, when you want to do business in a state, you know, maybe like a little paragraph in your, um, your, your information on your website, that explains that, and that would help people out, and maybe help your company out a little bit, to make it seem more legit than what it appears to be right now.
Now.
I mean, it's a little bummer, but I'm random, but I am concerned about this. Uh, I don't think we've touched a lot on the, um, EPA and the bindings there. Uh, they've talked about the, the containment of the, um, blades and, and inner material. From what I'm reading, this material is not inert, especially when it's windmill blades, and that's what they'll be dealing with. Uh, we've all heard about the dangers of EPA, and we all drink, you know, free EPA, free drinking bottles. It's been banned in food containers for young children in 12 states, Canada, European Union, and China. Other countries have banned, was severely restricted, including France, Germany, Denmark, and Malaysia. The Swedish Environmental Protection Agency has deemed it the most toxic, toxic substance we know. Why? Because EPA has been linked to a number of health issues, partly because it mimics the structure and function of a hormone, estrogen. That leads to combined estrogen receptors, influence bodily processes such as growth, cellular care, fetal development, energy levels, reproduction, and thyroid function and cancer. According to the Norwegian Environment Agency, one of the biggest problem areas is the huge increase in epoxy compounds in wind turbine blades. These epoxy compounds also use PFAS, also known as forever chemicals. They're biting their way into drinking water, waterways, and sea areas in larger economies. And just this morning, on KCRG, there was an article regarding to PUK's water, drinking water advisory due to excessive, excessive levels of PFAS chemicals. The current estimated cost to deal with this is $15 million with projects spread out over the next five years. According to a 2023 German EPA report, the European Union produces 347,000 tons of EPA alone, 15% of which goes into wind turbine production and epoxy resin. That's over 104 million pounds of epoxy resin, 2.2 pounds of EPA, thanks over 2.7 billion gallons of water unusable. And yet, locating a graveyard and industrial facility for pulverized wind turbines is being considered a half a mile from the Cedar River and close to homes who have wells, where they can leach toxic, highly toxic, uh, substances into our fine agricultural land, to grow water, and into the river itself. The river where families with children play, fish, and often eat those fish. A river that joins the Iowa River and ends up in the Mississippi River. I believe that it is also part of the board supervisors' job to protect families, land, waterways of Benton County. I believe our supervisors are also charged for that and have done a fantastic job of it. And so, I'm asking that you protect the people, the soil, the waterways of Benton County, which will flow over into our county, into Buchanan County, and won't go and deny this request. Thank you.
Do I live on 2342 Benton Community, and rode a mile and a half away from this facility? And there's been a lot of things said, and I erased a lot of things that I was gonna say, but here's the thing, it's carbon fiber particulates have been deemed as a threat to human and animal life. Epoxy and fiberglass is considered as hazardous materials. Now, as I stated, Benton County has ordinance that has prevented the working turbines from our county. Why would we bring hazardous materials into our county and risk our well-being? So, there's been a lot of good things said, but I think the risks are too high to go ahead with this project. There's no reward, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of to back up a little with these two people over here that just said earlier, like, just one little statement here. According to LinkedIn, destructible ink from Texas was started in 2024, and it has seven employees. This company may not even yet be a year old. They tried getting to Blackhawk and Buchanan Counties, who said no. There have been many cases where these types of companies have come in, the promises have cut out for the turbines blades, and never followed through. We have three cases right here in Iowa, Atlantic, Newton, Fort Dodge. The blades at Fort Dodge were later moved to Elswood. Blades have been laying around for four to five years. The Iowa Attorney General has sued companies that have allegedly illegally stored and been wind turbine blades. On behalf of this fledgling company fails. Will the taxpayers of Benton County be stuck with removal of these blades? Is Benton County gonna take this gamble? Benton County should solve the lead taken by Blackhawk and Buchanan Counties and just say no.
I pretty well let everybody talk today. I got a lot of questions I'd like to ask, all right? So, can you bear with me, everybody?
Yes.
All right? I don't care if you want to address them, or if he wants to address them, I really don't care. Uh, how many employees would you have running this?
I would have probably five to six employees.
Okay, are they gonna be Benton County residents, or is it somebody out of state coming up here?
I would have one lead in training that I would bring up, and then I would hire the rest of them. Okay. To be equipment officers.
And what's your wage threshold? What's your wage threshold?
Uh, we sit anywhere between 25 and 35.
Okay. Bear with me. Um, I took it earlier from what was said today, uh, you'll start like in July, and you'll go till September?
Yes, sir, on delivery.
And then shut it down for the year?
No, we will keep processing within bringing the blades and drying. That's just when the blades will be done showing up, like the delivery of that. We will continue to run and go through and shred and process the blades. They won't sit there and we don't wait for spring to come. We will have something filled over the shredder so we can still process and get everything taken care of. We don't want anything sitting. Our goal is to have as little impact and less. And we're working on that as soon as we're ready.
So you'll work 12 months out of the year then?
Correct, yes. Okay. The biggest thing that would stop us from that would be water freezing. So running misters or anything that when it's cold or if we have tanks, it turns into us stringing our tanks every night, reefering them once in a while, it's time, so it slows down the process. Or if we run heaters in our tanks, but it really comes down to the fact that we're not creating a hazard, a bunch of eyes to the cold winter up here. That would slow us down or postpone just to define. Because then we're not being able to mitigate the damage if we're not able to.
Okay, let's, let's talk about. Go ahead.
Cody, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. The other day is like, yeah, September's into deliveries, but really shortly after into deliveries, all the blades from this project should be processed and stored indoors. And once that process is done, to your point, that is correct. We will shut down operations and we're trying to get out of there before the winter hits and the moisture hits and the snow. So our intent is to get it done as quickly as possible, get it stored, and then, uh, and then shut it down until we start doing deliveries, uh, which should be in early part of Q1 2026 to Regent.
So you would actually shut down, say like the middle of November?
When we're done shredding. So after the blades are shredded, there's no more work to be done until?
See, that's what I'm trying to, in my mind here, focus on that. If you're only gonna take blades from July to September and you don't want a big stockpile, you said, uh, four loads a day?
Eight.
Eight loads a day? And you can actually process eight loads a day, right? When the grinder's running?
Yes, yes, sir, we can run, we can run a whole 10 tons per hour.
Will they work seven days a week or six days a week?
I'd probably hope so, my guys at six. We usually give our guys, make sure they have the day off so they get the best.
I'm just curious about how many blades then would be stockpiled then, say at the end of September, while you're still grinding?
Yeah, I'm not sure, because we'd have to, like I said, we get, our president comes in in the first place to build, which we look forward to, of course, understand this process and like we're here. But we get that ready, we start shredding as soon as possible.
Now, the, I understand you grind the blades, but how about fiberglass, the, the post or whatever you wanna call it, the pillar?
All the towers, those, those are no part of this. Nope, that actually stays on a recower project. They actually are replacing the generators. So we're actually recycling all the steel on the generators and then the hubs. We are only doing the blades we're here to grind, process for the shredder. Everything else and hence even the rut, where all the studs that come off, they create waste blade. That all comes off and it's going to a metal section. So this will only be part, partial of the blade minus probably 36 inches of the rut.
All right, now, then you also made a comment that nothing will end up in the landfill from this project, correct?
Correct.
100% comes in on a truck, recycled and goes back out on a truck.
Correct. And then these blades add that within communication of carbon fiber. We rarely, um, run into any blades carbon fiber. None of these projects have carbon fiber in the blades. And that's usually, we don't, we don't play with carbon fiber. And the other thing we won't do or accept is, uh, if it's not recyclable is why? Is any blades have been struck by lightning or been burnt or anything like that, that creates destruction of fiber that hits snow? You can't do anything with it, and nothing like that would be on the site.
Now, you've been stating this, that you will grind inside of a building. So you're gonna put a building up on that southwest corner of the big building?
Yes, it will enclose off that south door.
Yeah. Then you'll run misters then first. Now, are you gonna run a mister on the grinder as it's being fed in and shredded?
Yep, so our shredder runs spray misters, a coat over the top as it comes down and keeps anything from coming up out.
Okay, and then the company in Fairfax, they don't crap about your product being wet or damp?
As it goes through and that catches dust, it actually will not. It won't retain to the amount that we do. Where we build the barrier, like if we shred, it'll actually, as it comes out and goes, we'll leave a cap of dust on it. Like, it doesn't damp or make a saturate. It'd be the equivalent of walking under like misters in the summers. You go over, you can't fill it. But we should bait that barrier and adjust that to the pressures to work. We do that where we don't have anything just coming off and floating out of the way. And then as that gets moved and down into storage, we start, as we take everything back and we, there's enough shred there. It'll actually, the shredder will take it to a 10 to 12 inch minus. So it's actually like a big fiber ball as it come out filled up.
Now. Quick question, Tracy, are you, are the supervisors prepared to make a decision on this deal today?
We ain't got that far yet, we, I haven't. I have a lot of insurance and I wanna know, I wanna talk to the county attorney, my, myself, on some things like the bonding issue. I'm curious about that. Nothing against your company, I understand. You know, as you can see, there's a lot of opposition, you know? And I'm on the fence right now, one way or another, you know? So that's why I got a lot of questions to answer. I don't know what's gonna happen yet. Continue on with this meeting. I'm hoping it's gonna get over pretty soon, because I gotta, clock put upstairs today? Okay, get back. You're gonna store this, uh, product inside the building after it's ground, right?
Yes.
Inside. Now, I know they take, I was told they take two different sizes down there at Fairfax, whether it's really fine or if it's coarse or, you know, how fine do you plan on grinding it?
A 12 inch minus. So as it comes out, yeah.
So big pieces then?
Yep.
So it ain't like some of your competition that cranes it really fine?
No, no, sir. No, for, uh.
But you're still with that?
Yeah, Regent, that is still.
With Mary, when you're dust, right? That's when you, when you grind it that fine, the dust is intense. And so the larger pieces that we can make out of our shredder reduces the dust production.
I just, yeah, that's proprietary to have a large, for Regent and progress for them to be able to do.
But when the, the blades come in, they're gonna be actually stored outside on the south side of the building when they grab?
Yes, sir.
How many? Yeah, in a truckload? How many blades come in, in a truckload? And how many, how long does it take to do a blade?
Well, it takes, it takes four trucks for one tower. So we are a truck and a half, but then we'll send it three. Am I right, Cody?
Yeah, it's three blades, uh, three blades on four trucks. And, uh, those three blades will weigh 30 tons. Our shredder can shred 10 tons an hour. So if at full production, when we get up things going, we'll be doing somewhere around a blade an hour. So when I say that we're not gonna stockpile, even if we had to take two or three days loads before the shredder ran, we can catch up on that pretty, pretty quickly. Because we won't always consistently have trucks coming in. There'll be days where the site's shut down, we'll have three days to catch up. The idea is to keep the flow where blades coming in, our blades getting shredded, uh, and our team stay up with that. So just, just, uh, kinda put some, put some math to it. You know, one blade weighs 10 tons, we give you 10 tons an hour. We're gonna try to do a blade an hour and run that shredder for six to seven hours a day.
So when you're not breaking it up in fine chunks, are you putting it in pallets and hauling it away in a van trailer? And how many of them van trailers do you take, pose as three of them stepbacks you were talking about?
All's out on endups.
Endups.
Yeah, endups, yeah.
Yeah, we load it in endups with, uh, with a conveyor system and then they pull their cart over, they go over to Regent and sell it.
The company in Fairfax, the company in Fairfax that you're supposed to deliver this stuff to, will they be able to handle everything that you make?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, that's.
Because I mean, they got, excuse, go ahead. Go ahead, Cody.
Yeah, yeah, so Regent Fiber, uh, they will process somewhere between 20 and 25,000 tons of material a year. We have a, uh, our, the contract that I showed earlier on the screen, that put us a slot for our material. We have 4,100 tons of material. That gave us a slot in the Q1 of '26 for our material to go in. So they already have us in the schedule for this material to be delivered. And we'll start deliveries, uh, early part of February and finish deliveries sometime in May. We'll be leaving where from four to six trucks a day. Uh, and they, they, uh, they have a large, uh, storage facility there that can hold somewhere around, I wanna say 5,000 tons at any given time. And that bay will be clear when we start deliveries, uh, for that slot. So we, uh, we definitely on the schedule and they can handle the material that we're gonna be providing for them.
Because they're getting it from your competition right now, right? The place in Fairfax?
Competition out there, yeah. There's only about one, one or two other companies delivering at the, at the volume that they're delivering now.
Yes.
So it'll hold 400 blades? You guys will be storing those until February? You won't be starting to deliver those until February? Is that what you're saying?
It'll be shredded.
It'll be ground inside the building.
But I mean, the building can hold 400 shredded?
Oh, yeah. The building's 160 wide, 550 feet long.
Yeah. 400 tons, yeah.
It's big. All right.
The county, the county may want to also talk to Lynn County. Because Lynn County, this town of Cedar Rapids, is doing, is doing, been doing a long-term study on the agricultural land and the water coming from the ag land, uh, from us farmers and are doing some research in doing, uh, improvements to the nitrogen coming off our land. And this is a huge project. And they're, they're willing to pay the farmers to help do these projects. How are they gonna like it if you approve this without their own knowledge? And especially since it sits right next to a creek. And you know this stuff is gonna get in that water and go, go into the Cedar River, right? We'd highly recommend that supervisors check with Lynn County to make sure you don't get yourselves in a pickle with that.
I live a ways away from, about a half a mile, maybe away from Michael Wood. We have some that live right across the road from it, north of it, and, 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 actually east and west. They're pretty close to it. What's the noise? They get a bit woke up every morning at 7:00 with that grinder starts up? There's people that live exactly right across the road from it.
Yeah.
We will, we start at 7:00 and that would be a thing, it's heavy equipment. Yes, sir.
The noise, uh, the noise created has to be no different than somebody running a, running a tractor, right? Um, the noise from the shredder, uh, eating the rest of the metal?
Do you guys get any federal money for this?
We do not, no, sir.
So you're funded by your own?
Correct, and Cody, if I speak to that, by all means. Where I stand, I, I'm understanding it.
What was the question, sorry?
Uh, do you get any federal money to do any of this?
No, there's no federal money. This is all private money.
Okay. And you also said you ground it, you grind it with water, with a mister?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Brochures that was sent to me here a week ago that I was reading and going through, evidently your company does recycle. I haven't heard a word of this today, but solar panels?
We have, we're looking into it and looking at building a recycling line for solar panels. Uh, we have off taken solar panels and then take them to a recycler. We have helped out customers.
Very similar.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, very, very similar to the situation we're talking about here. We have recycling partners that we prep and get the panels, uh, prepared for in the way that they need to be to be able to deliver those recyclers to recycle. And, uh, in Amarillo, Texas, we're actively, uh, entering contracts and stuff to set up our own recycling line for solar panels as well as wind turbine, uh, wind turbine blades. But those aren't active yet. We still offer those recycling solutions, uh, through our, through the recyclers we're partnered with.
Tracy, are they, are you guys breaking down the blade or hauling the entire blade to the site? Are you breaking it down on the site, chunks, smaller chunks?
Yes, sir.
And then you're hauling it through the site?
Yes, sir.
So why are you breaking it down on site? Complete, to these 12?
Transportation.
Why? Yeah, you're already breaking it down on site. Why don't you break it down a little further and take the Regent site?
Right there, you got, you got mobile, you got a mobile grinder, you have it on site. You're in there and you have less handling. Just put it in the truck, ground it up, take it right there. No, we need, we need storage. This is coming, we need dry storage for the shred for, before it can be delivered to Regent. And so to take it from there and then to haul it at its lightweight after it's shredded, its lightweight, we cannot fit as much in weight in a truck when it's shredded and it's all fluffed up to the cost of transportation. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yeah, I did, just gonna speak to the process. The reason we do it this way, um, mainly is, uh, is due to what you just said, which is the ability, we don't have the ability to move as much. Just because once you shred it, it causes a lot of air in between the material. Um, and we have to pack it down quite a bit to even get as much weight off the, the site. There's also the construction timeline. It's a lot faster for us to, uh, cut these into panels, put them on trucks and send them to a central location to shred, to get them off-site for the construction, uh, side of things than it is to try to do it right there on-site. The other thing is we wanna do this indoors, right? We wanna shred indoors, we wanna store indoors. We don't wanna do it afterwards. And being able to do it on-site, we would have to, it's very cumbersome to try to build a full facility like we're trying to, uh, to get into here to do it indoors, um, so we can mitigate any of the stuff that you guys worry about, which is the dust, right?
Then how are you mitigating it for outdoors?
Stores, those things, we gotta do it indoors. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish here, is to keep everything indoors.
Cody, how are you mitigating border cuts and deals? Because you still have to cut and break it up.
What's the concern, sorry to take, if, uh, we're at the site, we probably move down at first?
My concern is all this dry storage, um, we are not immune to deracials. So if we have all this, uh, dry storage and a deratio comes through, then what happens to all this dry fiberglass?
People act like Michelle. I live a mile straight across the section from it. I've always been worried of deratio, tornado. I'd be picking steel out of my fields forever. Always been, something like that was in there.
Cody, the old.
Do your employees wear respirators when they're doing grinding? Everything? He's an outsider.
Uh, the majority of our guys are in, totally equipped. So fully equipped. So if they're out or in or they're getting like, we have to pull something out of the shredder, uh, say on the site where we have the rots and more clusters of green cash. We probably just wouldn't have that. Blades that would fall, we had a lot of junk in there. And that also is, stuff like that gets caught.
Is there any, uh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Sorry, I was quiet there for a moment on my end. No, oh, it's, you know, we're coming up on two hours for this. Is there anybody else who has any new point? Because I feel like we've heard a lot of, um, big points brought up, a lot of the same point. And supervisors, do you guys have any additional questions for these folks as well?
I guess the last question I got for Cody is that, uh, why do you call this a short-term project?
It's, uh, a timeline. It's a, it's a short-term project for us. I mean, you're talking less than a year, uh, will be in and out. Uh, that's, that's short-term. Our, our long-term projects, our long-term, uh, facilities we're looking at are 10, 10 to 12, 10 to 15 years plus. So for us, this is a shorter-term project. It's a quick turn. We're gonna get the material shredded, get the material to Regent. And, and that's, uh, that's the reason we've been deemed a short-term. Now, as I talked to you earlier, uh, we'd love to look at this, um, as, as a permanent facility to do this, do this work, uh, to support Regent with all the material that's coming into them that they need shredded, uh, to be that processing center. But obviously, the economics have to make sense and it has to make sense, uh, for the company. So that, that's the reason I'm naming it short-term versus, uh, some of our long-term, uh, facilities we're looking at.
Speaking, speaking of economics, though, what is your short-term capital investment versus your long-term capital investment? And how is that advantageous to the county as a whole?
Short-term investment here obviously is the, uh, the least. And then we will, um, obviously be investing in, in improving the, um, Short-term investment here obviously is the, uh, the lease and then we will, um, obviously be investing in, in improving the, um, you know, we've probably got four hundred thousand dollars in capex, uh, involved in, or actually close to a million dollars capex involved in this facility getting up run for this, this specific project. Long-term, um, you know, we could be looking at upwards of, uh, you know, five million dollars in capex, uh, invested in this facility to change some of the buildings and be getting more customized to what we need to do. Be building more of a permanent indoor area. Um, ideally, uh, you know, building a building where we're talking about, you know, the lay-down yard there, uh, I think it's on the south side of that, uh, facility. We wanna build a, uh, indoor barn there that's large enough for us to actually cut the blades inside, um, and have everything indoors. Um, you know, our, our facility we're looking down here in Amarillo, that we're gonna be standing up, every bit of the operation will be done indoors. Um, mainly just, uh, mainly just to contain everything and make sure that, uh, nothing goes outside, right? Um, so if we were making this permanent, um, there would be quite the capex involved in, in investing here. We'd also put a permanent shredder, uh, that's, uh, and not diesel shredder, um, in place at this facility, uh, to process those blades faster, but also to minimize the, um, minimize diesel usage and all those things, so.
What size of building would it be roughly?
Uh, it would have to be a bit of, uh, five hundred by a hundred or four hundred by a hundred. With, uh, and really the height is the biggest thing for us, so it'd have to be, you know, twenty-foot sidewalls, fifteen, fifteen to twenty-foot sidewall with a thirty to forty-foot peak.
Anything else, um?
Go ahead, Derek.
Then we just, anything else, let me just need a motion. Uh, if there's not anything else, we'll just need a motion to, um, shut down the hearing and, uh, yeah.
I would like to know when you would expect the shredder to be ready? You said if you were gonna bring in blades in July, when would the shredder be ready?
Like, ready to shred? After the buildings go, after we have the structure, so we'll hire somebody here to put the structure to the outside to drape. I'd say a month or so. Take a minute to accept the hearing now?
I will, I will make the motion to pause the land use hearing.
About for a vote?
Tiffet, aye.
Seamen, aye. Now, my next question is, Derek, you still on?
Yeah, I'm still on, can you hear me?
Yep, uh, I got questions yet, but I wanna keep things moving.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. I'm, do you need me on, cause I'm a hot, hot, uh, we get a presentation on a very good law that I probably need to catch up for, you can see the new updates on.
Has, uh, well maybe Barb can, has a land use hearing ever been tabled before?
Um, that, I don't know, I'll pop my head.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Barb here.
We. We have tabled land use hearings if the board feels they do not have enough information to make a decision. And then we usually revisit the same topics again.
Yep, I, I know, I know.
I, I think we've got a lot of information.
For myself, I believe I have enough information to, uh, make a motion.
Okay. Do your motion then?
Um, Tracy and, uh, Ron.
Do you wanna second it?
Uh, not, Ron, I just, I was final first.
Alright, my motion would be, uh, I'm gonna find it. I move, uh, I move at this point to deny the request for the application for land use change as the proposed new non-agricultural use is inconsistent with the purpose of ordinance twenty-four. Uh, it's incompatible, uh, material used, uh, could alter the stability of the overall land use program in the area. Its impact on the land and environment, uh, to me is unknown, uh, but it would impact, uh, I have no doubt it will impact adjacent property owners, whether that impact be in property values, farming operations, or overall enjoying of the land. I do believe that these gentlemen will be successful in marketing their property. I just don't believe that this project is a good project for Benton County.
Based on what I've heard today, and I want these guys to be able to move on and recoup their investment. I think that would be, you know, I can understand. But I don't believe that this is the way that they need to do it, so I would second your motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tiffet, aye.
Seamen, no, because I have more information, I like to get out there.
Bull's eye.
There you go, denied.
Yes, we're all ready to adjourn here and then we vote though.
Okay, sounds good, do you guys need anything else for me?
Thank you, Derek.
Barb would have never said that. He did not, no. He never would have said that, ever, no. That was about my, not about you. Tracy, we need to adjourn meeting.
See you later.